Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this version of the Lewis and Clark County Commission meeting this 20th day of March 2025. We generally start this off with the Pledge of Allegiance. So, let's do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the more formal part of our agenda, I wanted to, last at the meeting on Tuesday, there was a certain cellphone that rang during our proceedings, and I jokingly said, "Okay, you gotta bring donuts." I oftentimes don't realize people take me seriously. And so, the lady with the ringing phone has graciously provided us with cookies, and they're over in the staff eating room. And thank you, and I shouldn't joke about things, should I? Let me introduce the crew here. Ah, I am Candace Payne. I'm Chair of this operation. We have Commissioner Rolfe to my immediate left side. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
I'm just Chair. Good morning, Chair Payne. That'll work. And then we have Brandy Spangler over there, who's our recording secretary. She's gonna make sure we do this in a timely fashion. And Greg McNally, who's the Director of Planning and Community Development. To my immediate right is our old buddy Commissioner Andy Hunthausen. Nico Hash is the Deputy County Attorney, and Keegan Shea is his right-hand man, and Roger Balls is our CAO. Welcome to all of you. We have a sign-up sheet, a sign-in sheet at the front of the room here. Please, you know, give us your name and your contact information. All right. Time for the Consent Action Items by CAO Roger Balls. Go for it, Roger.
Thank you, Chair Payne and Commissioners. This is Item 2 on your agenda. There are two items. The first one is Item 2A, Public Meeting Minutes for February 20, '25, and '27, March 4 and 6, 2025. Staff recommends approval of that item. The next item is Item 2B. It's Resolution 2025-19 to authorize the county attorney to employ special counsel to assist in prosecution of ADC-2023-181, and staff recommends approval of that item as well. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Roger. Is there any questions from the Commissioners?
None here.
Nope. And just so the whole world knows, we have read this and looked at it before this meeting, so it isn't like this is just... What a surprise. Okay, is there any public comment on either of these items? Seeing none, guess we better have a motion.
Chair Payne and I move to accept Consent Action Items 2A and 2B as presented by Mr. Balls.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the Consent Action Items as presented by Roger Balls. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Number three is a bid award for generator replacement, and this will be presented by our friend Audra Zachral. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. I'm Audra Zachral, Assistant Director of Public Works. On March 6, four bids were opened for the Murray Generator Replacement Project. The project generally consists of replacing the generator and automatic transfer switch for the Michael A. Murray Building that operates as a health and medical facility. Of the four bids received, one was disqualified from consideration because the bidder included detailed exclusions from the base bid that were specifically addressed in Addendum Number One to be included. Funding for this project is from an American Rescue Plan Act grant, and work is anticipated to take place late summer of 2025. Staff recommends awarding both the base bid amount of $179,400 and the 10-year comprehensive warranty additive alternate number one for $4,750 to Eagle Electric, Inc., for a total contract amount of $184,150, and authorize the Chair to sign all applicable contract documents.
Thank you, Audra. Does the Commission have any questions for Audra?
No.
Are there any public comments on this? If there's no public comments now, you don't get another chance later. This is it. Cutting it off, okay. Actually, I have a question for you, Audra. Who does the work on putting this in?
Chair Payne, Commissioners, I'm sure I understand your question.
It's a generator replacement project, so somebody's gotta take the old generator out and put the new one in.
Okay.
Who is providing that? Does our friend Mac back here have anything to say about it?
Thank you for that question. So, the existing generator and transfer switch will remain in place, and at some point, we will repurpose it somewhere in the county. Eagle Electric, Inc., that we're recommending award to this morning, will be installing the new generator and transfer switch.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Any further questions, comments? Is there any public comment on this issue? Seeing none, time for a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move that we award both the base bid amount of $179,400 and the 10-year comprehensive warranty additive alternative number one for $4,750 to Eagle Electric, Inc., for a total contract amount of $184,150, as presented by Audra Zachral.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve this base bid and its additive alternate. Do we have any other further comments on this? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the bid award for the Murray Generator Replacement as presented by Audra Zachral. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes three to zero. Number four on our agenda is the interlocal agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the City of Helena, and this will be presented by Cheryl Martin. Good morning.
Good morning. Cheryl Martin, Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office, Senior Financial Coordinator. Today, before you were have consideration of our interlocal agreement with the City of Helena for the 2024 Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program Award, we've been doing this for years. It pays for about 14% of one of our officers or deputies for the MRDTF, the Drug Task Force, and will get $11,574.
Does the Commission have any questions on this?
It might be good, Chair Payne, if we would kinda get a little more explanation for the public about...
The Missouri River Drug Task Force is a task force of seven counties, and they come together and they work on Drug Task Force items. We have another MRDTF JAG grant that we get a little bit more money for, and we combine those to help pay for our deputies.
Thank you.
So, this is seven counties, and they work together?
Yes.
To slow down the drug trade? I mean, can you give us a little more detail about what kind of work they actually get done?
I cannot give you a lot of detail, as I'm the financial person and not the person that works with them. I do know that it's seven counties. Gallatin is one of the larger ones. We, our county, myself, manages the money for them. So, I pay the bills for them as they come in, and Gallatin County is the one who accepts the bills. And then we get money from taking away from people who like vehicles. We just got some money for some vehicles about six months ago. So, as people are arrested and prosecuted, we get some of that money, and then that's what helps pay for the task force.
That's very interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more, is there any public comment on this issue? Seeing none? Speak now or forever hold your peace? Could we have a motion, please?
Chair Payne and I would move to approve the interlocal agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the City of Helena, as explained by Cheryl Martin.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the interlocal agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the City of Helena regarding this funding for the Missouri River Drug Task Force. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes three to nothing. Thank you, Cheryl. And then, oh, our favorite card. This Agenda Item Number Five is the amended subdivision application for the Buffalo Hills Estates amended subdivision Phase Two. The applicant is Lori Schultz, who I believe is the Secretary of the Homeowners Association, and will be presented by Planner Phil Gonzalez. We saw this presentation, this is a subdivision up by Augusta, and we had a presentation on Friday where we had a bunch of the Augusta people there to provide input if they needed it. Okay, Phil, tell us about it.
Thank you, Chair Payne and Commissioners. Phil Gonzalez here with Community Development and Planning. Yes, I am here again to present the Buffalo Hills Estates Phase One amended subdivision, not subdivision, application is subdivision 2025-6. As you mentioned, this is a subdivision that is generally west of Augusta, just a few miles outside of town. The portion that we are hearing today, based on this map here, is Phase Two. As I mentioned previously, the other meeting, Phase One and Phase Two, they're called the same subdivision. They are essentially two platted, differently platted subdivisions, even though they contain one HOA and an internal road network that connects them. The Phase Two, which the applicant is seeking to amend that subdivision, specifically the covenants or county covenants that were filed alongside the subdivision when it was platted in 2007. The applicant is requesting the removal of Number 19, County Covenant Number 19, which relates to livestock within the subdivision. Now, I'll read that quickly here. Those subdivision, county covenants, are in the staff report, and they are Exhibit C, so you can take a look at them there. But that Number 19 County Covenant states the raising and keeping or confinement of livestock, with the exception of animals used for 4H, is prohibited. And then note, lots 21, 22, 23, and 27 are excluded from this covenant. As I mentioned, that Phase Two of that subdivision was plotted in 2007. Alongside those county covenants that were a requirement or condition of approval for that subdivision, what we call additional private covenants were filed alongside those county covenants when it was first platted. The county, or the private covenants, have a covenant Number Seven that relates to livestock. So, I'd like to read that into the record this time as well, so that private covenant is represented as Exhibit D within the staff report. And that Number Seven states, quote, "Animals, no more than two horses may be kept year-round per lot. No other animals, livestock, pigs, poultry, or fowl of any kind shall be raised, bred, or kept on any tracks, except that dogs, cats, or other household pets may be kept, provided they are not kept, bred, or maintained for any commercial purpose. The homeowners' association shall have the power to limit the grazing on all lots if the lots are being overgrazed. Lots 21, 22, 23, 26, and 27 will be exempt from that two-horse rule, but will have a limit of no more than eight horses or mules per lot." So, the applicant is seeking to remove that or have permission or authorization to remove that county covenant Number 19. But those private covenants associated with that Phase Two, the subdivision, would remain limiting all lots to essentially only two horses, except for those larger lots, 21, 22, 23, 26, and 27. So, the applicant seeks to remove that county covenant again, essentially just to have up to two horses that would be permitted on those lots. As I mentioned at the previous meeting last week, staff did notice this amended subdivision application to internal and external agencies. All adjoining landowners were mailed a notice both in both subdivisions and all properties adjoining both the Phase One and Phase Two. This application and hearing was publicized in the Helena Independent Record, as well as the Time Standard publication, Great Falls. Sign was posted on site at this time. Staff does recommend approval of the application. Staff has done an analysis and found it does not conflict with any zoning districts in the area or, and does not conflict with the countywide growth policy. Now, with that, I am available for questions. Did not believe the applicant is here today, but they are present at the previous meeting and was available then to answer some of those questions. But I'm here to go over anything the Commission may have. Thank you.
Phil, I just wanna make sure everybody understands what this does. Am I correct in that when the original subdivision was approved, the county required that the covenant about not keeping a herd of camels in your backyard was included as part of the agreement with the county? And that would be enforced if it wasn't in compliance or it wasn't included, then the county would step in. So now, the homeowners' association has, they've all agreed to specific covenants, and Number Seven is a covenant saying if you have more than two horses, one of the other homeowners with whom you have made a covenant, a contract, it's a personal thing, that homeowner, any of the, what, 27 lot owners, can bring a lawsuit against you to enforce that. So, they still, there are still protections provided even though this is gone. Is that correct?
Chair Payne, Commissioners, that is correct. I think it's important to note that, you know, the county covenants, as we call them, was a condition of approval for the application, for the developer. So, those covenants and the private covenants were filed prior to the HOA being created, prior to any of those lots being sold, and prior to any of those property owners kinda deciding what, you know, what those covenants would be. So, essentially, yes, the county covenants, we are here today to, application to request that the Commission allow the HOA or the property owners to amend those county covenants. And I mentioned at the previous meeting that amending those county covenants would require all of the property owner's signature to be filed alongside that. So, essentially, we are just removing, requesting to amend those county covenants, and then those private covenants would essentially take effect. Now, those are private covenants, just like the county covenants, those property owners could amend those. They can have a herd of camels or as many horses as they please, but they would have to go through that process to amend those as well.
Thank you, Phil. And as we've discussed, this was presented first in our regular Augusta meeting last Friday. I was personally very pleased to see how many people showed up. I was expecting there to be, you know, rude words and cranky things. They weren't. They were all in favor of this. They wanted to get this done. Looks to me like they have an active homeowners' association, which is paying attention to things like, you know, if you've got too many, got a band of sheep out there, whatever it is. So, and we did, we went over this, the staff report, and, let's see, are we ready to proceed?
Well, Chair Payne, we haven't had opportunity to ask questions yet or anything.
Darn. Okay. Do you have any questions? Go for it, Andy.
Chair Payne, Mr. Gonzalez, just again, you kind of covered this in your presentation, but just a general characterization of why the applicant's bringing this forward, and then again, what if we proceeded with a yes on this, what would be the result of that? What would, of course, it would be removed from here, but what is that and why? Is this, are these, is this covenant, county covenant, in some way, strucual with the private covenants? Is there, what are their reasons, I guess? I just wanted to get that on the record again. We talked about it a little bit in Augusta.
Certainly. Chair Commission, the property owners alongside with the Secretary of the HOA who submitted this application stated in their application their desire was for more of those lots within that Phase Two to have horses. Their review of their county covenants stated livestock and believed that their livestock conflicted, the restriction of livestock conflicted with horses, which they saw was something that, you know, should or could be allowed on some of those lots. So, they have filed this application essentially to remove that county covenant Number 19, allowing their private covenants to kind of take effect, so essentially put a backstop or limit on, you know, what could be done on any lot. So, essentially, just allowing horses on any of the lots, and essentially allowing the exclusion of any other type of livestock other than dogs and cats and other household pets. So, their, essentially, their desire is to allow just to have additional horses on more lots.
Thank you. As Chair Payne said, I think all of the testimony we heard in Augusta was affirmative or just questions, general questions. There wasn't any negative feedback. We did have a couple of written public comments, and I think both of those were concerned that there wouldn't be any sideboards if we removed this. And I think we've talked about that and answered those questions. In essence, there are and would remain private covenants, which can be changed through a process, but that would take 100% of the property owners to participate in that process, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Payne.
Yes. Tom, do you have any questions?
Yes, I just wanna kinda clarify it and put it maybe in more, in simpler words for me to understand it. If I understand this correctly, we're gonna take Exhibit D, which is the restrictions, and we're gonna remove Item Number 19. And then, the underlying restrictive covenants, which is Exhibit E, Item Number Seven, will be in force instead. And then additionally, there's really no other impacts to anything else. There's no, there's no other impact to any other portion of what's done here.
Chair Payne, Commissioner, that's exactly correct.
I think we need to have a global motion to conditionally approve the Buffalo Hills Estates Phase Two amended subdivision.
Chair Payne, happy to do that after public comment.
I was gonna do public comment after, but, okay.
No, we have to do that before any motion. Public comment comes before any motion. Yeah.
He's got 18 years of experience. He knows his stuff. Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing none, now may we have a motion?
Chair Payne, I would move that we conditionally approve the Buffalo Hills Estates Phase Two amended subdivision as presented by Mr. Gonzalez.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to conditionally approve the Buffalo Hills Estates Phase Two amended subdivision application. Is there any further discussion? There appears to be no more discussion. Then, before we vote on the motion, we have to first take up the findings of fact for this project. So, may I have a motion to accept the findings of fact for the Buffalo Hills Estates Phase Two amended subdivision as presented in the staff report?
So moved. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to accept the findings of fact for the Buffalo Hills Estates Phase Two amended subdivision as prepared by the staff in the staff report. Is there any discussion?
Chair Payne, just the only finding that really is impacted or discussed in relation to this is the finding of fact under the compliance subdivision regulations, and that's where this covenant is, that's what it's related to. So, just to pointing that out. Other than that, I don't have any further.
Tom, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. So, I didn't remember, did I, did we do a motion to accept the findings of fact?
We did, Chair Payne. Motion and a second.
Okay, so now, motion has been made and seconded to accept the findings of fact for the Buffalo Hills Estates Phase Two amended subdivision as prepared by staff in the staff report. And then I asked if there was any discussion. We did the discussion thing.
I think we're ready to vote.
We're ready to vote. It's time. Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we accept the findings of fact for the Buffalo Hills Estates Phase Two amended subdivision as presented in the staff report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes three to nothing. So, that was the findings, and now we have to do the conclusions. I need a motion to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report that the Buffalo Hills Estates Phase Two amended subdivision will have adverse impacts, and those adverse impacts can be mitigated by the condition of approval as presented by staff in the staff report.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report that the Buffalo Hills Estates Phase Two amended subdivision will have adverse impacts, and those adverse impacts can be mitigated by the condition of approval as presented by staff in the staff report. Is there any discussion?
Chair Payne?
Yeah.
Those conditions related to this action on page 11 of your staff report, so the book and page reference to restrictive covenants is one. Prior to submitting final subdivision application, the application of successors will document to the lawful owners of property, and there'd be a preliminary approval for three calendar At the end of this approval period, the Board of County Commission may request, by request, the applicant and its successors and assigned extend that further, but we'll find it probably unnecessary. However, those are the three conditions that are impacted by this action, for the record. However, those are the three conditions that are impacted by this action for the record.
So just to make sure I could understand, you know, you kind of mumble sometimes. Andy, I think you said that this is going to have to come up again in three years for final approval of removal of the, of that paragraph 19 from the county subdivision regulations?
Well, the condition reads, Chair Payne, the preliminary approval shall be enforced for three calendar years. At the end of this approval period, the Board of County Commissioners may, at the request of the applicant, its successors, or assigns, extend the approval period if that approval period is included in a specific condition of a written agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and the applicant, its successors, and assigned. So that's the condition. It's a standard condition that we have with all subdivisions, and typically we give three calendar years for completion of any preliminary approval and for folks to get things done, and they can ask for an extension. That's, it's...
So who, the ball is in the court of the homeowners association to remember to do this?
Yeah, and the applicant, they're requesting it, so they have...
Well, the applicant is the Secretary of the Homeowners Association. We are now at the point where we can take motion, take action on the motion to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report that the Buffalo Hills Estates Phase Two amended subdivision will have adverse impacts, and those adverse impacts can be mitigated by the condition of approval as presented by staff in the staff report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes three to nothing. Now, we have to take action on the global motion for the Buffalo Hills Estates Phase Two amended subdivision. So, and we have considered the findings of fact, conclusions, and conditions of approval for the Buffalo Hills Estates Phase Two amended subdivision. And now I will entertain an amendment to our global motion to conditionally approve the Buffalo Hills Estates Phase Two amended subdivision based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and conditions of approval we have voted on.
So moved.
An amended motion has been moved and seconded to conditionally approve the Buffalo Hills Estates Phase Two amended subdivision based on the findings of fact, conclusions, and conditions of approval accepted by the commission. Is there any further discussion?
Chair Payne, just to thank you to Phil. Appreciate the work you've done on this. It's always cumbersome and complicated, and thanks to the folks for bringing it forward. I appreciate the people in Augusta for coming out to our meeting as well, the hearing that we had there, and that was good to get a good idea of where they stand and how they feel about the project or the proposal. And so that helped me with the agreement to move forward. So thank you, Chair Payne.
You bet. I think I would concur.
Do I need to ask for public comment?
No.
I don't think I do. Okay. Well, let's take action on this motion to conditionally approve Buffalo Hills Estates Phase Two amended subdivision based on the findings of fact, conclusions, and conditions of approval accepted by the commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, same sign. Motion passes three to nothing. Well, we've done it again. Got through the agenda. Is there, at this point, we ask for any public comment on any public matter within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda above? Seeing no one coming forward from the public, I'm going to adjourn our happy little meeting here.